All right, good evening. We'll go ahead and call to order our regularly scheduled planning and zoning meeting for Tuesday, December ninth, 2025. We'll call.
Commissioner Jim Mayne.
Present.
Commissioner Brian Clark.
Present.
Commissioner Bobby Rosadillo.
Present.
Commissioner Chad Queen.
Present.
Commissioner Kristen Sandu.
Present.
All right, first on the agenda this evening, thank you Troy. First up on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so first up on the public hearings this evening. Case number two five dash oh two dash CPM, area of impact boundary reduction, Mr. Hanson.
Good evening Commissioners, for the record Doug Hanson, Planning and Zoning Director, seven fifty-one West Fourth Street, Kuna, Idaho. The Kuna Development Services Department proposes a comprehensive plan amendment application to reduce the city of Kuna area of impact boundary. Per Idaho Code, Local Land Use Planning Act, an area of impact is where growth and development are expected to occur. Areas of impact should be planned for growth and development and should be not, and should not be used to stop growth and development that conforms to applicable plans and ordinances. Areas of impact should be established, modified, and confirmed based on the ability and likelihood of a cities, of a city to annex lands within that area of impact in the near future. The comprehensive plan identifies the area of impact reduction areas with the future land use designations of public at approximately five thousand fifty-four acres and agriculture at approximately four hundred and seventy-seven acres. It is not anticipated that any of the parcels proposed to be removed from the city of Kuna area of impact will be annexed into the city, nor will they have, will, will the city have the ability to provide services for the foreseeable future. And one quick correction, on the agenda there is a small typo, it should say case number twenty-five dash zero two dash CPA. So when making the motion, please reference case number twenty-five dash zero two dash CPA. And with that, I will stand by for any questions.
Is there any questions, are there any questions for staff at this time? And so just to verify again, so we're reading through the, the report, this is mostly BLM and as stated agricultural land?
Yeah, it's predominantly owned by the BLM or the Idaho Department of Corrections. There are a few smaller private property owners, but the majority of it is federal and state lands.
All right. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and we'll open the public here, if there are no, no questions for staff. We'll go ahead and we'll open up the public hearing for case number two five dash zero two CPA six oh three. I have several set up to testify tonight. Okay, I just want to verify Kimber Jenkins. Was this the one that you wanted to talk in on or?
Um, I'm sorry, I.
If you could come to the mic, please. And if you can go ahead and hit the button at the base of the mic, go green and state your name and record, state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, it's Kimber Jenkins and my address is nine one zero five West Rockstone Court in Kuna. Um, so the legal notice that I received, it just didn't have a lot of information. Um, our property is right on the corner of BLM and the back area. We've just watched all the development coming in, we've lived there for a little over twenty-one years. And so we were making sure that what this meant was that it was continuing to be BLM and agricultural area, just because of the map was, we were unsure of the map. And so I checked, I wanted to testify just in case it didn't mean what I, what I think it means. So just confirming that it will stay that way, that those areas will stay that way. And it won't impact, I mean, because Metta's out there, we're really worried about our water, we're worried about a lot of things.
Yeah, so I mean, if it's, if it's Bureau of Land Management, it's, city boundary is not going to affect that whether it's part of our area of influence or not, so.
We're literally right on that corner, so, okay, that's, that was my question, thank you.
Thank you. And then I also have a Dustin Hunt on here who you didn't check whether or not you wanted to testify or not. Oh, okay, all right, so you would not like to testify on this one? Thank you. Okay. So staff, as the applicant, do you guys have rebuttal?
Only if you have any additional questions for us.
I think we're good and I think we covered the, the question that was asked, yes? Okay, all right, so with that, I'll go ahead and I'll close, close the public hearing at six oh six. That brings us to our deliberation.
I don't think there's much to deliberate, it's just taking something off of our books that we wouldn't be addressing anyway.
Yeah, agreed, I mean, if there's nobody here that it's going to affect in a negative way.
Makes sense. Yep. This one's about as clear as it gets, easy. I'd stand for a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of case number twenty-five dash zero two dash CPA with the recommendations as outlined in this, sorry, with the conditions as outlined in the staff report.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you, kind of. All right, next on the agenda this evening. We have case numbers two five dash zero six S and two five dash two six dash DR for Test Manor, Troy?
Good evening Commissioners, members of the Commission, this is Torby Huneen, the Senior Planner, Kuna DSD. The application before you this evening is requesting preliminary plat approval for approximately seven point eight acres. In the city limits within an R six zone that is already established. And they are requesting preliminary plat approval to subdivide the seven point eight acres into approximately thirty-two single family lots. And nine common lots with an accompanying design review application for the common lots. The site is located near the southwest corner of the intersection of Ardell and K Avenue roads. Just to give a, a little bit of history with this project, this, had things gone differently, you know, in the past, this would have been already developed. This was a phase of the existing subdivision. It just didn't meet the timelines and the developer didn't want to move forward and they lost the entitlements and here they are tonight asking for, to basically bring the entitlements back up through the public hearing process. Staff has reviewed the proposed preliminary plat and the design review with compliance with Kuna City Code, state statutes, and the Kuna Comprehensive Plan. And the map, and should the Commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat? And if the Commission decides to approve the design review application, staff would recommend that the applicant is subject to the proposed recommended conditions that are listed in the staff report. I know that Dave Crawford with Centurion Engineers is here to present and I will be here for any questions that you have.
So any questions before, any questions for staff?
No.
Okay, if the applicant would like to come up?
Chairman Commissioners, David Crawford, Centurion Engineers, two three two three South Vista Avenue in Boise. I'm here representing the applicant or the owner of the development of Test Manor subdivision. I'd like to start by saying we really appreciate working with staff, we wouldn't be here without them. We did present this project probably over a year ago, had a number of townhomes that were planned on it, so there were narrower lots attached units. When the project hit the shelf, we kind of dusted it off here a few months back and got it resubmitted and the applicant, the owner had a neighborhood meeting. And in that neighborhood meeting, there was a lot of positives about the redevelopment, but there was also some, the townhomes weren't well liked in the neighborhood. So we brought the proposal back with zero townhomes in it, they're all single family homes. All the lots within the development meet the zoning requirements. We're essentially finishing off subdivision as Troy mentioned, where we're extending the existing stub streets through the project. I think there's three of them from within the development and out to K Avenue. That'll allow for additional access, not only for the residents, but for emergency services to access from K now that it would be connecting. We've centralized our open space features, we were lucky and unlucky all at the same time. We have a boundary that coincides with the center line of the Kuna Canal. But we were able to take advantage of that by stepping our subdivision boundaries back from the easement and placing a pathway that'll go all the way from our centralized open space from K to Ardell. So we have, we have pedestrian connectivity through the development out to those streets as well. So we feel that's really beneficial for this development. Public Works has indicated that it can serve the project and has the capacity for the thirty-two lots that are proposed. We feel that this is a great asset for the city of Kuna as it completes what is just bare ground that's not being utilized for farming activities or anything like that. So this is kind of the natural infill development that sits here. We've been in contact with the school district who is here tonight. It was kind of late communication, but we have opened that communication to form a partnership that we can assist them. But I did get that information over to the owner who's actually looking at some of the capital improvement projects. We, this property essentially completes an infill development pattern. We provided something that is consistent with the Kuna codes and ordinances and with the comprehensive plan. We believe it'll be a great asset to the city of Kuna and I'll stand for any questions you have.
Any questions for the applicant this evening? As part of the development, are you guys completing Ardell from its two locations through?
Chairman, we have a small portion that butts Ardell near, at the canal. So the only thing that we, we would not be doing anything improvements in there and the highway district have not asked us to do anything in there. That's going to be part of a larger project to expand that, that'll involve a number of property owners or highway district improvement there if that's ever done. We are responsible for a portion of the K Avenue widening. There's two property owners that abut the center line of that canal and the district has indicated they want us to participate in a trust fund deposit for our half of, half a bridge, so.
So your entrance will be on K and then the existing entrance into East Siena Creek Street? Those will be the entrances into?
Correct.
Sable Ridge, yeah.
Members of the Commission, just, just so you're aware, just talk a little bit closer to your microphone so that the, the microphone or the recording picks up on it.
I'm new, I apologize.
That's okay, one lashing is free.
So that's more of a question for staff. Okay, any other questions for the, for the applicant?
No.
Cool, thank you Dave, appreciate it. Now, I think this is more of a question for staff, correct me if I'm wrong, the one thing that was noted in the, in the report from Public Works. This project can be served, no problem, thirty-two lots, originally it was only slated at twenty-eight. I guess the question is, how is that going to affect, and it is stated briefly in this, in the report from Public Works. It's just the potential cascading effect. How's that, do we have a plan for how we're dealing with that in the future? Do you know the statement I'm talking about?
For the record, Torby Huneen, Senior Planner. Yes, we've had multiple discussions with Public Works about this. We, we, we don't deal with, with a lot of that. We rely on Public Works to issue us the most current and up-to-date information and if they say they can serve it. We don't worry about where the pipes are going or how big they are, that, that's what they do. So we would rely on their statement that they can serve it.
Right, right, okay, I, I just noticed that that is the one kind of caveat in the report that was potentially concerning.
Yeah, staff, staff has no other inside information on that.
Right, okay. All right, so at this point, we'll go ahead and we'll move to the public hearing. So first up, we'll open the public hearing here at six sixteen PM. So first on the list to testify, I have Jern Field. And just as a quick note for this evening, as you come up to the podium, please verify the light is green, please state your name and address for the record. And we want to be sure that we can hear everybody this evening, we do have a three-minute timer running for each person, so please respect the timer. When you hear it chime, please give us your two or three seconds of closing, I don't want to cut anybody off, but I will. Please.
Vern Field.
Vern, thank you.
Five seven one East Siena Creek Road in Kuna. I am the HOA President for Sable Ridge Subdivision. Just some questions that we have, we actually appreciate that with the comments that there are no townhouse to be developed and there will be, I'm assuming, single, all of them will be single dwelling homes. So we appreciate that part and I know that was a big discussion and a big negative on our end. Couple, some things that I wanted to talk about that have been brought to our attention is like dust mitigation, you know, what are responsibilities for the developer in making sure we have homes very, very close right there in that section where they'll be building? So there'll be a lot of dust, a lot of, little bit of everything going on, so hopefully that that mitigation of controlling the dust will be adhered to. I know that'll be. Okay, is that better? Okay, sorry. So that's, that's one of the things that the residents in that specific area are going to be facing and so we want to make sure that that's taken care of. Also the access, we're concerned about trucks, semis and stuff trying to come in off of Ardell into Sable Ridge. That intersection coming off of Ardell is not designed for semis and big trucks. A couple of times, Tom tried to get a semi out of there and actually ran over part of our lawn and, and did some damage that we had to repair. So we want to make sure that, that all the big trucks and everything that are construction trucks are actually using the K Street access. Not to mention if they're coming through the other part of the sub, that we ask that those, those contractors adhere to the speed limit. We do have children in the neighborhood that play and I don't know when, how soon this is going to start, but we definitely want to make sure that they adhere to the speed limit and pay attention to where they're going and, and watch out for children. I'm assuming this is a phase one only? That's, you know, is this just going to be phase one, there's no phase two where they're only going to do part and then finish later on? It's only thirty-two homes, so I'm going to assume that this would be a phase one and only on that, just to mitigate any unnecessary problems in the area. One concern that was brought up and asked the question is that if they're going to be blasting in the area, what is the liability? And do the homeowners have anything to worry about that are extremely close to that area if they're going to do any blasting at all whatsoever? I think that'll be a big concern because there's people that brought right up to the fence line. And if they have to blast close by, will there be some problems there and do they need to make sure that they let the neighbors know what's going on? But other than that, that's, I think that covers for the most part, thank you.
Thank you Vern. Next on the list to testify, I have Tim Jensen.
Tim Jensen with Kuna School District, seven eleven East Porter Street here in Kuna. Just first, I want to apologize for not, a letter not getting in time to be in your packet for you guys to review, but I did want to be here to, to verify what David had said. You know, they have agreed to partner with us again on this project as they have in the past and so wanted to verify that with you guys and, and just stand for any questions you guys might have on this, on this project.
Any questions? Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Next up to testify this evening, Rick Renaud.
Yeah, Rick Renaud at seventeen thirty-six North Greenville, Kuna there. We're in the Sterling Ranch subdivision. My concern is traffic when you open up that other road coming out of that. We already have a little bit of traffic that's been coming across that field and I understand people trying to take that shortcut across to get over to this part of, or to the by mark part of the city. And then the school in the mornings, man, it is crazy, the traffic that runs through there, thank goodness the kids are either still in bed or, or they're, well, they're not out in the street. Because it is, it, it's crazy there in the mornings and evenings. I'm just concerned about not having K Street all the way open. It would really help out in our subdivision, we have a lot of people, traffic that's coming off of Hubbard and the other subdivisions that run through our, our subdivision. And I understand that, you know, but, but when you open up, you're going to have a lot more people coming through the, the existing subdivision plus that subdivision. And it's going to make it crazy coming through there. And I know you guys have a grand plan for K Street from what I understand, your plan is, if I'm not wrong, that you're going to put a turnabout right there in that, that area there, is that true or, that's just what I've heard? And we just, we really need that to get something done on that because of the, the traffic that's coming through there. I hate us to, to wait around till some kid gets ran over or whatever, but it is, it's, it's pretty bad. And I know my street is right parallel with K Street down there, so they're taking that or they're going all the way down and, and coming through, I forget what the, what the street is there, but yeah, it's, it's something that's, I really think we need to look at that before somebody gets hurt. That's all I have to say, I am glad about the townhouse is not going in there. That's, that's awesome, but that's it.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, next on the list this evening to testify, we have Kevin Schroder.
Kevin Schroder, six oh eight East Sable Ridge, Kuna. I've lived at that house, I'm the second house from the dirt. Been there for eleven years, I'm pleased to hear they're not doing townhouses because I don't want to see the house value go down and everything in that phase one or phase two in that area has been single family houses. So I was curious about the square footage of the houses going in in those thirty-two lots, if that's something that can be answered or not. But other than that, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Next up to testify this evening, Mary Ann Michelson.
Hello, Mary Ann Michelson, five thirteen East Ridgestone Drive in Kuna, I'm in the Sable Ridge subdivision. And the reason I'm here this evening is I want to request additional conditions of approval for this project which may not be listed in the staff packet. The developer verbally agreed to the first three at our neighborhood meeting, May fourteenth. So the first one has to deal with access. The access to the job shop should be taken off the existing North K Avenue and the proposed inlay street. With only emergency access through the existing streets within the Sable Ridge subdivision. North K is better suited to handle the traffic generated from construction. The next item is regarding dust mitigation. I D E Q, per their standards, can you please ensure that the developer submits a dust mitigation plan? To mitigate dust in and around the existing subdivision prior to the construction of the subdivision? Existing homeowners should not be required to clean the exterior of their homes or pay someone to clean the exterior of their homes due to dust generated from the construction process. And the next item was regarding trash. Can you please require the developer to place trash receptacles and dumpsters on site to keep the project site generally clean and free from trash? Which is generated from construction, so it doesn't end up on the land of the existing property owners. As you know, Kuna could get pretty windy and existing homeowners shouldn't have to clean up after the developer or the builders. And the last item has to do with the Kuna School District. The school district is at and over capacity at every school. And as of December seventh, I wasn't able to find anything, any formal written comment from the school district regarding the subdivision. So the school district has repeatedly stated that they're at or exceed capacity. So it's my feeling that growth should pay for itself. And the likelihood of a bond or a levy being approved at this time or in the near future, it's not very high. So the school districts has a voluntary mitigation program. And I think that is the best way or the best method to address this problem. So I'm asking, please do not approve this project until the developer has come to an agreement with the Kuna School District regarding their impact to the school district through that mitigation process. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
I also have a Frank Michelson on here not to testify, just want to verify. All right, I'm just confirming here, okay, McKnight not to testify?
No.
Okay, all right, we'll skip through those. Jim Essick?
Good evening, my name is Jim Edick, I live on six one three East Sable Ridge Drive. I just recently moved back to Kuna, Idaho. I, I bought that house because of, it was that, I'm on the very end right where the construction is going to start. So obviously I have a lot of concerns because I haven't been part of the history with this, nor was I informed of what was going to be taking place. So it was pretty shocking when I received in my mail that they are going to be putting on that seven acres thirty-two single residential places. And I'm doing the math in my head and all of the homes that are on Sable Ridge, they're roughly quarter acre, you know, per resident. Every house is roughly anywhere from eighteen hundred twenty-one, twenty-two hundred square feet. It's looking like these are going to be some pretty small homes. And my concern is, what is that going to do to our value? I literally just spent half a million dollars on this house and right next to me is now going to be what I'm assuming, these, these little tiny homes. I mean, you got seven acres and a portion of that is going to be a street, what I would take goes right down the middle. So how many acres you really got to build on when it's all said and done? Plus you got sidewalks, front yards, everything's got to meet the code, so obviously they've met the code. But what is that going to do to the value of those of us that have invested a lot of money into our homes? And so that's my biggest concern. You know, the, it's just, you can tell they're going to be some very small lots. And so that's, and then also, I, I also would like to reiterate the, the dust concern, the dirt, the traffic getting into Sable Ridge. It's, there's a lot of corners. It, it's just, it's not built for, you know, heavy traffic. But, you know, I realize everybody wants to be able to build. I mean, there's a high demand for Treasure Valley. So I do understand the concept, but that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up to testify, I've got Jeff Fimeon.
My concerns have been already presented.
Okay, so at this time, you'd like to change to not testify?
Yes.
Okay. And then I-
Can I change to testify?
Yeah, so one second, please. I'm going to make an open announcement. Anybody who has not testified will be welcome to. Just a moment here. Don Benefield, I don't have a record of whether or not you wanted to testify or not? All right, thank you. Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to sign up to testify or change their direction? If you'd like to, please come up and sign in. I'm sorry? Oh, you were? Right. Okay, no, that's fine. Okay, well, so you'll need to sign up for each, so we have to sign up for each application? No worries. Was there anybody else? Sir, did you want to go ahead and you wanted to change? What was your name? I'm sorry.
McKnight.
McKnight? So we'll get you up in just a second here. All right. Go ahead, Dustin.
Good evening, Dustin Hunt, eight seven eight East Buck Drive in Cuna. So that dirt lot, just a second, some comments made a little bit earlier. It has been an eyesore. We can't avoid development. Those aren't my issues. In the Sterling Ranch community, I've been on the phone several times with local law enforcement, speeding, cruising through, caught on camera, almost running over some kids in that neighborhood. Zipping down through Hubbard, excuse me, Ardell, Hubbard, K Street in particular. I don't have a problem with the development, but the flow of traffic is the biggest concern. We are, there is a ton of traffic moving through that particular neighborhood. And not to minimize the, the traffic situation in the other neighborhood that's connecting to. But it is terrible. So that's my biggest concern. The dirt lot is cut through. There was some fencing that was put up last year, I think, has been cut down or moved around. So it's a cut-through lot anyway. Just adding the homes is going to increase the traffic. So it's bad enough, and that's why I want to speak on behalf of tonight. So my biggest concern is that, that thoroughfare there, the, the cut-through, so. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, yes, Mr. McKnight?
Did I need to come up there first?
Uh, no, I've got you here, so that's, I moved the check mark for you.
Okay, thanks. My name is Ed McKnight. I live at six oh four East Ridgestone. It was interesting. I didn't plan on testifying. I sent a letter of protest, essentially. And my concern was addressed several times here by people who made some very good points. And one of those has to do with no mention of lot size. The existing lots in my subdivision, as far as I can tell, are a minimum of eighty feet wide and a hundred feet deep. When I looked at the plan, it didn't look like any of the proposed lots were of that size. They seem to be smaller. And I gauged that by looking at my back fence, which is eighty feet wide. I took the plan out, the proposal, and looked, and it looked like I'm going to share my back fence with two houses the way the lots are structured. Early on, you mentioned that this is a continuation of a proposed build-out within that subdivision and that it wasn't finished by circumstance or the owner's choice. The assumption I would have made at the time is that, yes, they're probably going to build this out. It'll probably be residential and the lots will probably be the same size. Is it R six? Does that mean six lots per acre? Is that correct?
Yes.
Will this proposed subdivision match that existing subdivision in size, lot size? I think it should, especially if it's a continuation on the regular initial proposal. The other thing I wanted to mention is someone mentioned that fence that they put up on K Street that meets the lot where everybody's driving through, signs both sides, at one time said, "No trespassing." The fence was taken down, was moved. Apparently, a lot of people don't realize what "no trespassing" means. And I thought, well, the nature of things today, this is not a real good foreboding, or it is a foreboding of what could happen here, the type of people we may be getting in there. I don't know. The, the other thing that was mentioned was the traffic and the danger of it. And I see that, too. I'm not in Sterling Ranch subdivision, but they've got a problem now. It's only going to get worse. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last call to testify on this application. David?
Chairman, Commissioners, David Crawford, Centurion Engineers, two three two three South Vista Avenue, Boise. Appreciate all the input that we've had from the neighbors. It's, I'm really glad that we were able to address those, many of them, prior to bringing this project forward here. I'll kind of get through these as quickly as I can. Part of the development process, once we get our entitlements, we go through and get our construction plans approved and then we're subject to all the conditions that come through that. So there was a lot of concern about dust mitigation, construction, those types of things. There was a requirement to meet the dust mitigation, or a request to meet dust mitigation for the Department of Environmental Quality. That is a state standard. We have to file an erosion control, stormwater pollution prevention plan and notice of intent to construct prior to construction with D E Q by default. We also have to do the same thing with Ada County Highway District. We're subject to inspections, both from city staff and from the Ada County Highway District that specifically monitors dirt trackout onto existing roadways. And we are required, the contractors are required to clean those or they're, or they're penalized. So having an additional condition, we're already subject to those conditions. We definitely are, are responsible through that stormwater pollution prevention plan to do dust mitigation, construction entrances, many, many things that are dictated by the state, formerly the EPA. So construction is a lot better. There's always, because it's construction, particularly in the summertime with the Cuna dirt, it blows around. There was a request for cleaning of exteriors of homes. That's a pretty subjective thing. And how far has that impacted? I, I think we could make the, make the case that we would take under consideration any reasonable request. I can see where that could get out of hand pretty quickly. But we definitely want to be neighborly, and I think we can take a look at things on a case-by-case basis. There's a lot of discussion of speed limits throughout different areas of the neighborhood. We can't enforce speed limits, but once our construction starts, that's going to get rid of a lot of the construction, or a lot of the cut-through traffic that's going across the dirt lot now. There is only going to be one phase of development. There's no way to really structure this one to do two, though it could be done. It just seems like that'd be a waste of time. So currently, we're only planning on a single phase of development. I'm glad Mr. Jensen got up and talked to, talked to you folks tonight. We've had, been in communication with them, and I've communicated information to the owner so that we can work with the school district to partner with them so we can, yeah, so we can work with them to do that. It's amazing what you can fit on a fifty-foot wide home, or fifty-foot wide lot that's a hundred feet deep. So routinely, on lots this wide, we can get anywhere from fifteen hundred to twenty-four hundred square foot pretty easily, depending on whether single or, or, single or two-story homes. So the, the home prices will be in keeping with the current home prices, though the lots may be different. You'll find that there's not going to, it's not going to affect property values. New development never hurts existing developments as far as property values. I understand that traffic is always a discussion. About the only thing I could say is, the development pattern for improvements of existing streets is that as a development comes in, they are the ones that are responsible for the, for the improvements, for example, along K Street, that will be doing, that'll widen that road up along the length of our property. And when that next property redevelops, then it's responsible for getting its widening up to the intersection so that K Street can be fully opened. Another option is, is that if, when we do building permits, A C H D collects impact fees from every home. And perhaps the city can work with the highway district to do some neighboring programs to do improvements. I don't know if that's possible, but I, that's the only way I, I know to direct those impact fees, maybe where they need to go or in, in the city of Cuna. Let's see. The developer has pledged already correct to access, construction access from K, K Street as its primary access point. It was noted that the Cuna School District-
Do you want to finish that thought, David?
Like I said before, we are definitely working, working with the school district to partner. But I did want to talk really quickly just about density. Density back when Sable Ridge was developed was really done under a different code. So the lots were required to be larger. Under, there's a newer code where the lots are required, can be smaller. But there's also, it, it offsets the need for open space that was not required when Sable Ridge was done. So we're getting much more open space and a little bit denser development.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, and we'll close the public hearing at six forty-three. I'm going to bring us, I'm sorry? That'll bring us to our deliberation.
I feel like they addressed a lot of the concerns. I mean, the big part about this project is just going to be when and if K Street's going to connect to Deer Flat. And I mean, that's going to be the big, you know, hindrance here, you know, in Sterling Ranch neighborhood going across. I mean, I've seen it, you know, kids going to and from school, parents bringing to them from school. You do get a lot of traffic because going either direction on Hubbard, you know, it's easier to go down K and cut through Sterling Ranch, you know. But that doesn't make life very good for Sterling Ranch. So I guess, you know, question for staff, you know, is, is there any plan in the future? Do we have a timeline for maybe that opening of K up onto Deer Flat?
Yeah, so for the record, Doug Hanson, Planning and Zoning Director. A C H D, in their five-year plan, has signed a, a construction year of two thousand twenty-nine for the Deer Flat, K Avenue intersection with the final, the completed construction of that segment that goes north on K Road as well.
It's on the plan.
I guess another question for, you know, builder. What would the anticipated start time be for construction if this were to be approved?
Chairman, Commissioners, David Crawford, Centurion Engineers, two three two three South Vista Avenue in Boise. Considering where we're at today, it's possible that we could be late spring, early summer construction if everything works out okay.
Okay, thank you. So, I mean, that, you know, it's going to be closed off during construction at some point, you know, it'll open up. But, you know, you're looking at, what, twenty twenty-nine for K Street to open up into Deer Flat? At least there's a solution for that. It's not going to help in the meantime in between the houses being opened up and, you know, K Street being developed. But that's, you know, my big concern at this point. As far as everything else looks, I think it looks good. I mean, when you look at, it's R six, but they're, you know, far less dense than R six. You know, which kind of fits in with R four that's surrounding. You know, they're closer to R four than they are closer to, to R six.
And as stated, with the new and additional open space requirements. That helps.
Well, I'll tell you what I think. I'll tell you what I like about the project. I like the pathway along the Cuna Canal. I like the open space. I like a road that actually exit, exits onto, excuse me, North K. Basically, that'll relieve traffic come right, driving back through the subdivisions. The one thing I did notice that I'm not happy about, the same thing the last gentleman spoke to, is lot sizes. You know, we've got several lots on here that are under fifty feet in width along the road. And my concern is basically, what kind of a product are we going to be putting on those lots? And is that product going to be compatible with what's in the existing subdivision? You know, being a good neighbor, I would think that, that we want to make something that was compatible with what's there. Maybe not an eighty-foot lot with the house sizes that they have there. But I think that some of the lots, lots on the, they would be the west side of Sienna. Those are sixty-foot lots, and those seem to be adequate to me. When we get on the other side of the road, we're dropping down into the fifty-foot lots. And then when we get further down, closer to the exit onto K Street, we're down in the forties on those lots. And a forty-foot lot, you might be able to put a pretty big house on it. But with a forty-foot lot, how do you get to the back of the house?
Well, just a note on that, you're speaking specifically about Lot Four Block One. Because Lot Four Block One is a fifty-foot rear. The, the, the cut, the, the frontage is, we're sitting there at the corner. So it's got the forty, the seven-foot chamfer on it.
Yeah.
So, but the overall width of the lot, and the parallel lot lines are that hundred and twenty-some-odd foot deep with a fifty-foot overall width. So that one matches his neighbor. He just looks weird because he's on the corner. He's got that chamfer on the front yard.
Yeah, I still think a fifty-foot lot is pretty narrow, especially for the type of product that you're going to put on there that's going to be compatible with what's in the existing subdivision.
Yeah.
I have a question for the developer. Are these, is this a multi-builder development or is this all for one specific builder?
Chairman, Commissioners, David Crawford. David Crawford, Centurion Engineers, two three two three South Vista Avenue. This will all be for the developer himself. As far as I'm aware, he's built out the last several subdivisions that we've worked with him on and has not hired them out to others or to a larger development corporation. And if I might add, all the lots in here exceed the minimum lot requirements from the zoning ordinance. So we have a number of lots in here that are above nine thousand square feet. So we do have- we do have larger lots than that, than is allowed by code.
Thank you. So I mean, we're looking, um, based on the sample elevations and, uh, floor plans that we're given, we're looking somewhere between fifteen hundred and twenty-five hundred square foot homes, uh, single and double story. It looks like they're all thirty-five to forty-foot product on the fifty foot, so they're meeting the five-foot minimum setbacks. Yeah. I love it.
I don't.
I know, I know. The good news is with hundred and twenty-foot deep lots, we at least get backyards.
Yeah, but you can't get down the side of the house to get to it.
We'll have a separate conversation. I'll tell you some of the stuff I've had to do over the years.
I, um, I have a few things. I think my, uh, my biggest concern in this is the traffic. ACHD study stated that this, uh, development is going to add an additional two-hundred-and-ninety-one vehicles per day. It's equivalent of thirty vehicles per hour. And maybe when it's all said and done, that won't really be an issue, but considering the upcoming development that ACHD has planned and then the developer has planned, I can see that becoming a, um, a dangerous situation since it, it is a cut-through road. And, uh, ACHD also stated that they have no plan to expand or to develop the bridge, uh, on Ardell Road, which typically they require half of the construction from the applicant, but since they don't have a five-year plan development, the applicant is not required to put that half of, uh, cost down. So I guess that would be my, my main concern with it.
Thomas, questions?
I think everything, the, my thoughts have been fairly well addressed. I, I agree with the walking path and the improvement of the neighborhood roads. But comma, the lots are smaller and that does affect the feel of the neighborhood. And I know they fit the R-six requirement. I understand that and the open space. I guess I'm not really saying anything, am I?
All right, so, um, the facts, the fact of the matter is, so we've got two cases in front of us. We have a preliminary plot and we have a design review. Design review is covering the landscaping, um, color palettes, things of that nature. And the preliminary plot is, um, a recommendation to city council, city council consultant say on all of these developments. But from our standpoint, um, our job is to verify the that it fits within planning and zoning code. And the fact is, right now, this is, um, well within the standards for, uh, R-six. It does, um, all the agencies have recommended approval to us. And, uh, school district is in favor. And those are usually some of the bigger concerns is, is, um, school impact and a lot of that kind of fun stuff, so. I think if there aren't any other comments, um, I'd stand for a motion. And I can't make it.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of case number twenty-five dash zero-two dash CPM.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Correction.
Wrong one. Um, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of case number twenty-five dash zero-six dash S with conditions as listed in the staff report.
Can I get a second?
Uh, for the record, Doug Hanson, planning and zoning director, just for a quick point of clarification. If there is a counter motion here to recommend denial, we're going to need to have some sort of reason identifying a deficiency as to why the project is being recommended denial.
I'll need a second or a counter.
I, I will counter. I will, and I realize that it meets the requirements of R-six, but I was swayed by the public testimony about the lot size and the valuation of the.
So for the record, Doug Hanson, planning and zoning director, so we can move forward with this, however, if our perceived deficiency is that it meets the requirements of our own city code. I mean, you get what I'm, you understand what I'm saying. It's, it becomes difficult for us to craft a decision in reason statement. Because all of these things are for appeal. There's regulatory takings and analysis, like those types of things can eventually be led to. So I just want on the record that everything does comply with the applicable zoning ordinances in state code.
I got a question for Doug. What if, what if the ITD refused to comment on this project? Would that be?
For the record, Doug Hanson, uh, planning and zoning director, so ITD was notified that the project would be moving forward. They don't always provide comments if it doesn't create an impact to the state highway system.
Could I ask the applicant a question?
Uh, in order to do so, we would just need to reopen the public hearing.
Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and reopen the public hearing on this, uh, on case numbers two-five oh-six dash S and two-five dash two-six dash D R at six fifty-seven P M.
Commissioners, David Crawford, Centurion Engineers, two-three-two-three South Vista Avenue in Boise.
Thank you, David. Would, uh, would the applicant be willing to adjust some lot sizes on this project?
Commissioner, as I indicated in my opening statement, we brought this project forward over a year ago. It had a way denser feel and it had townhomes. We did exactly what the neighborhood asked us to do and we did exactly that. Land values are not going down. It's really hard to purchase land, develop it and still make a buck. And so we feel that we brought forward a compliant project and I've asked my client on a number of occasions how little lots he could live with and this is where we ended up.
So that's a no.
Correct.
Thank you.
Quick question, just to clarify. You said by how little lots he can, you mean few, not small, correct? With how few he could.
Okay. Apologize for that in this statement.
Nope, just wanted to clarify.
The number of lots.
I, I have a question. Um, have they conducted an environmental study on this, uh, development? Environmental impact considering that there are existing residents in that region?
Commissioners, um, I'm not aware of an environmental assessment that's been done on the property, but through the stormwater pollution prevention plan, we are required to assess any endangered species or critical habitats. I would say, say that this was previously agricultural farmland that's just gone unused, so the likelihood of there being any sensitive endangerment of wildlife is pretty negligible.
Do you have a report on that study?
I do not.
Commissioner Sandu, the city of Cuna doesn't have a requirement for an environmental, like, impact analysis of a subdivision of this size.
Thank you, David. Uh, if there are other questions, sir?
No.
Okay.
Doors are still open?
Please don't call out from the audience.
Yeah. Just as a note, if you've previously, uh, everybody has three minutes to testify on a given application. So even with the public hearing open, we would only be able to accept new application or new testimony from anybody who has not previously spoken on this specific case. So with that being said, uh, is there anybody who would care to testify that has not previously testified on this application?
I'll testify.
Okay. And this will give the developer an opportunity to rebut, if you wouldn't mind coming up and signing in, please?
Sure.
If you'd please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Frank Michelson. I am at five-one-three East Ridge Stone Drive, Cunado, eight-three-six-three-four. What I was under the impression is that they were going to put twenty-six houses in that unit, in that area, in that seven. And when, when I look at it and they said they're going to have open spaces, is, are they going to have nine open lots that can be sold later on? Or is it going to be a closed kind of a deal? And then like, uh, Jim Mann said here, the, the lot sizes at fifty feet, you, you can spit almost fifty feet, so, um, that's pretty small lot sizes. The houses are going to be pretty condensed in there, right? And I understand that it is, uh, R-six. But I believe ours, uh, when we had that subdivision, when I moved into that, so I believe it was R-four. So I'm not, uh, I'm not positive on that, but I just want to reiterate how the lot sizes are pretty small and if there is a, uh, where they can come in and sell any of those open spaces for townhomes later on. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please.
Commissioners, David Crawford, Centurion Engineers, two-three-two-three South Vista Avenue in Boise. I guess I'll just talk about the density issue again. We're at five-point-seven units to the acre in an R-six zone. We have a minimum lot size requirement of forty-five hundred square feet and most of our lots are around six thousand square feet. Yes, it looks different than the other neighborhood. That's due to the code changes. The code change is never considered open space in past developments. It does now. We had, we were needed to provide a minimum of seven percent open space. Due to the configuration of our property, we have close to thirteen. So it is a, it is a trade-off. It's considered by code and it's contemplated within this development. We've brought forward a reasonable development. That's going to be an attractive asset to the community and to the city of Cuna. It's not unusual. It is maybe different than what we're used to. However, it's quite common to have lots of this size. I commonly work in Boise where I'm doing twenty-five hundred square foot lots. We're talking about six thousand square foot lots here.
And just a point of clarification. This is permanent open space.
Oh, correct.
This is permanent open space. It is reserved on the map as open space for the, which will go to an HOA or public use.
Commissioners, thank you for that question. All of our open spaces here are not dedicated to the public. They're privately maintained and owned by the homeowners association.
Thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing. I'm sorry, one, or no, at this point, we'll close the public hearing at seven oh-five. And just a real big point of clarification. So something that, uh, I think about a lot, um, having sat on this commission for a couple of years now. The fact is, sitting on the commission is to be as objective as reasonably possible. It is very hard because a lot of people come to us with very subjective concerns. And we are brought, part of our packet that we're presented and what's presented here by the engineering, by staff, um, by ACHD, by ITD, by IDEQ, uh, by the school district, um, we are given facts to judge. And one of the hardest parts of, of this job is we are asked, we are expected to make a judgment based on the facts. I want to be subjective with a lot of these that come to us. Um, I want to say, oh, that lot's too small. Okay, but it's R-six. What about the traffic concerns? Well, ACHD says it's okay. The engineer did a traffic study. They say it's okay. Public Works did a, a study on their system and they say it's okay. They have the information. They have, uh, they have the, the, they have the models at their fingertips that we don't have access to as the public, and it's frustrating. It is very frustrating. But I just want to reiterate that as the, a commission here, our job is to try and be as objective as reasonably possible. Because at the end of the day, if we do put city in a position where they have to defend something that's already legal, we're going to end up costing the city, us, the public, money in litigation. And it's a really frustrating spot to be in. And I, I'll admit, I struggle with it. But that's the fact. We have to remain objective. And it's really hard sometimes. So I'll come back to my original statements on this map. It is presenting us with thirty-two legal lots. And sure, I'd like to sit here and say, hey, these should be eight thousand square foot minimums, but I hate to say that ship has sailed. We are presented with thirty-two buildable lots, a quarter acre open space, which will be owned and maintained by an HOA for the benefit of this community. It is providing, um, additional circulation elements, which I think are sorely needed, which is very clear in the Google Maps. I can clearly see this dirt access road who, um, I'm hearing people are violating daily. So I think this is going to be an ultimate boon to the community. I mean, I'll go back and say it. I would love it if this had stayed, uh, rural, either rural residential or agriculture, but the other big aspect of this is we have a property owner whose rights we have to respect, which is another hard aspect of this job. Because, yeah, I'd love to tell my neighbor he doesn't get to build five thousand units. But unfortunately, if it was zoned that way and it shows on the flume that way.
I have a question for Doug Hanson. Is there a comment from ACHD directly to this development?
Uh, yes, ACHD's report is in the packet and they have a summary table, uh, in the beginning and actually states that without any mitigation from the development, the project will meet the level of service planning thresholds.
And those are additional figures that are unfortunately provided to us as kind of heartless and level of service E. I don't have a really great feeling for that. But again, ACHD is telling us it's okay.
The reason I ask is because H, ACHD requirements are intended to assure that the proposed use or development will not place an undue burden on the existing vehicle transportation system within the vicinity impacted by the proposed development. And looking at their notes, they don't necessarily have a traffic count for Ardell Road and it seems that they have a pre-planned road extension in that same region in twenty-twenty-six, which is above the same time that the developer is going to be developing their property. It sort of contradicts the requirements, at least in my opinion.
So where we stand right now, I do have a recommendation for approval, and I have a recommendation for denial. I still stand with no second for either.
Well, Mr. Chairman, seeing as how staff has indicated that this, this project complies with all the requirements of the city, uh, I would second the recommendation for approval to the city council.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor of recommendation of approval for case number two-five dash zero-six dash S?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
Commissioner, can we get a, a roll call vote on that, please?
Jim Main?
Yes.
Bobby Restile?
Yes.
Brian Clark is a yes. Chad Queen?
No.
Kristin Sandu?
No.
Thank you. And then next up, we still have the two-five dash two-six dash D R, design review for the landscaping plan. And that is a, and that is a approval, not a recommendation for approval or denial.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, case number twenty-five dash twenty-six dash D R with conditions as outlined in the staff report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. That is the last that we have on the agenda for this evening. Are there any comments, uh, recommendations, or, uh, reports from staff? All right.
Make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't think there's any opposed there.